At seven o'clock, we'll call the regular Village Board meeting to order. If everyone would rise to say the pledge for this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Miranda, Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Cam.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the February 11th, 2019 Regular Village Board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as presented? If not, a motion to accept as presented.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee Bowden.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 2/9/19 and the amount of $50,727.73. Accounts payable, general fund, $48,048. Giving a total of all funds, $48,048. Are there any questions on any of the bills or the payroll? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker, second by trustee March.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes. Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item?
Boy Scouts are asking permission to deliver bags for helping hand on March 30th and picking your bags up on April 6th. You will be out between 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on both days.
And this is for helping hands?
Yes.
Very good. This didn't make the agenda for tonight, and we'll put it on the agenda for just an action item next meeting, but Boy Scouts were just, wanted to make sure that they had permission for this so they can start publicizing it and getting the word out to everybody. Any of the trustees have any questions for the...
What kind of stuff are you looking for?
Is that food?
Non-terrorist items.
I'm looking at items.
Food, toilet paper, paper towels, anything non-terrorist.
So you'll be dropping bags off to all of the houses then, and people can fill them up and put them back out, and then you go back and pick them up?
With the notification. I do have one question in regards to this. In all my years doing this with the Scouts, we have never been told we couldn't ring a doorbell and, you know, or knock on the door. But this last time I participated, we were told that we were not allowed to ring a doorbell. Is that true, that we are not allowed to knock on the doors? I mean, this is a community service, and the boys are out there showing face. Is there a problem with them?
Who told you they could not ring the doorbell?
I'm with the Girl Scouts as well, sorry. We were told we were not allowed to ring doorbells and show face. You know, leave the bags, drop them off, go back and pick them up. If they're not out there, we don't give bags. To me, it's, you know...
It's just like, to me, part of canvassing the village is the knocking of the door and ringing of the doorbell. We're giving that permission.
That's what I...
So, yeah.
I just want to clarify because...
There's no law that would prohibit unless we did. The one thing would be if the homeowner had a sign.
Right. Yeah, if the homeowner has a sign that says "No Solicitors," then, you know, you should respect that and not ring the doorbell or knock on the door. But otherwise, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
No problem. Okay. Very good. Well, we will put this on our agenda, you know, for next meeting to formally approve it, but I don't think there's any objection from any of the trustees at this point in time.
All right, sounds great.
Will they need to come?
No, they wouldn't. You can if you want to.
We will be here on the 11th.
Okay.
We talked about that.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, one of the things that we did talk about today was the Boy Scouts would like to sit in on a meeting, so maybe, you know, kind of sit at the table, you know, with the trustees and maybe up front here, and I said I did not have a problem with that. I don't think there's any issue with that at all. So we can definitely do that.
It's something they've done years ago and kind of fell by the wayside. It was always done during the month of February for Boy Scout Month, but we're pushing it to March.
Yeah, no, we would definitely plan that for the next meeting then.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And you've got my number, just touch base with me.
Yes, and I gave it to Mr. Stankis, and he will be contacting you to work out any details.
Good. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. All right. Any other public comment on a non-agenda item? We'll move on to reports of committees. Village Administrator report.
I didn't put a paper report in your packet this time, but I just had two quick items for you. So they're kind of Eastern Williston communities, they meet, kind of not on a regular basis, but they do meet, and they used to be kind of brand themselves the Iron Ring. I don't know if you ever heard of that term, but this was mostly transportation issues, but when the airport was kind of, you know, doing more, more active, and Eliana issues. So it's Moni, Crete, Beecher, University Park, Piattone. So those mayors and managers, they get together and they meet various issues. And so we recently had a meeting in Moni, and one of the issues that came up was that they felt like public work, their public works directors should get together and talk and get to know each other, not just for some, you know, emergency that would pop up and they would have share, you know, have an emergency response together, but just for, you know, kind of basic everyday issues that might come up, or there might be a shared issue they could work on together. But, so we wanted to kind of bridge that networking opportunity, and so we're, we have a meeting scheduled on February 28th, about 2:30, and so we're gonna head over to Moni again and have that, bring the public works directors together, so. The next one is that Jean and I are gonna be reviewing TIP proposals. We got three in so far, and that's probably all that we about expect. We're gonna be reviewing those TIP proposals for that 57 area on Friday. That's all.
Any questions for the administrator? All right. No chiefs report tonight, engineers report.
Just one note, the pavement management plan from that CMF grant that Piattone was awarded, the company doing IMS originally said they were gonna do it on April 18th and 19th. They moved that date up to March 27th and March 28th. That's all. Just so you know, if you, like I said, if you see the vans driving through town, that's who it is looking at the pavement, yeah.
Good.
I have a question for engineering. The fellow from Aqua was here.
Uh-huh.
And I'm kind of beating a dead horse, because I always bring it up, but I just can't stand to see a good road tore up. When, they're gonna bring this over to Corning Avenue, that's where it dead ends, and then we're gonna be redoing Corning.
East or west of Route 50?
West of Route 50. And I asked him if they have intentions of upsizing the line, because he says they'd do eight or 10 inches probably as an upgrade. And I said, are you coordinating this with engineering? Or are you aware of it following? He said, well, we should be coordinated with engineering, but you should check with them. Are you working with them so we're 110% sure that we're not gonna put this road in next summer and then a year later tearing it up, or two years, or any time in the foreseeable future?
After the last time we talked about this, maybe it was two months ago or two meetings ago, I spoke to Aqua about it. I told him about the Corning project. I told him about Rathge Road will be finishing up this spring. I told him this intersection around 50 and Corning will be finishing up this spring. So if there's anything you need to do, you know, before then, do it, do it now, because we don't want a road torn up. And they told me they did. At this time, they don't have plans to do anything on Corning.
Because when they gave us their presentation and stuff, they said they would work very closely with the village and engineering, so we don't have this happen.
Yeah.
And I don't want that to go away.
I mean, I don't want that. Yeah, I've reminded him several times.
Because wasn't Corning, wasn't that water main one of the things that our water department wanted to replace at one time, I thought?
Yes.
Right? Was it?
Yeah, Corning, where was that?
It was down by the Speedway Station, I think, in that area.
Yeah, to the west.
So I think that's something, well, again, I think...
So maybe talk to Jim about, because that's, you know, before we started this whole Aqua thing, I remember them saying that was one of the ones they wanted to replace, so.
I think so, yeah.
Because I think that's four inch in there, possibly.
Yeah, that's what it says on the map.
Yeah. Okay. Anyway, we will reiterate.
Maybe you can let us know at the next meeting what you found out.
Okay.
And we want to stay on top of that.
Okay.
Anything else, Trey?
That's all.
Okay. No old business, move on to new business. Item A, new business registration, Piattone Corner Cafe Incorporated, 102 North Second Street, new owner, M. Minat. Am I saying that right? I hope. I do not see them here. We met with Marilyn and, can't think of his name. Anyway, we met with him a couple months, a couple months ago, month and a half ago, and they were initially looking at, you know, a couple different things here in town. They've owned and operated Marilyn's up in, yeah, up in Moni for the last 10 years, I think, and they have, you know, left there a few months ago, and we're looking for a new home, and they are taking over the cafe downtown here at the corner of Second and Main Street, and they will be opening on March the 5th, Tuesday, March the 5th. They've been in there all last week, and they're in there again this week. I walked over and spoke with them. They're in there painting, cleaning, getting things ready, and they're very excited about coming to town, so. This is their business registration application.
The other question I had was, they've checked no on modifying their sign, their exterior sign. Isn't it getting a new name?
It is. So we'll have to, any, yeah, any, they'll have to get a sign.
I'm trying to tangle them up in nonsense, but...
We'll address that. Yeah, if they're gonna change it, they'll just have to get a permit for it.
That was all. Again, not trying to be a pain, but...
No, not at all.
Yeah, they didn't, they put days and hours of operation set in for, and like, well, is that Monday through Friday, or, you know, so I...
I had to call them on several, you can tell the difference on my writing and their writing.
They may have interpreted that as they're leaving the sign, they just changed the letters.
Maybe it's wanting to slide that panel on.
Possible. It's possible.
But we're glad they're coming.
Yes.
Yeah.
For sure. Any other discussion? If not, a motion to approve the business registration application.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Item B, Bobby Kelly Concept Plan Presentation for Devonshire of Piattone Wedding Event Venue Proposed Location Northeast Corner of I-57 and Wilmington Road.
Hi, everybody. I am happy to be here tonight. My name is Bobby Kelly, for those of you who don't already know. Amy has hooked up the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation, just to make it a little bit easier for you to see everything, and I do have some information to leave for the village that I printed off. I also want to just circulate a couple images that I had completed based off of the proposed blueprints and the rendering, should this project be able to move forward. So I'm gonna pass these around, but this is the proposed Devonshire of Piattone, which I want to introduce to you tonight. Amy, if you want to go ahead and click. So the objective that I wanted to present on tonight is just to introduce the Devonshire project to you, as well as explain the purpose and the key design elements, and then, of course, discuss project feasibility, so that I can hopefully move forward and progress this project. Go ahead and... So in this slide, it simply shows you the front entrance. Devonshire of Piattone is what I have been calling the project. There is no formal business that has been named. I don't have a business number or anything yet, so everything is conceptual at this point. However, I have placed contract with the owner of the piece of property that I would like to build the Devonshire project on, and if you go to the next slide, what I wanted to do, and I do have an image that shows the site and also a site plan, but just kind of the things that I want to go through is a little bit of the project history. As far as this project, I actually purchased a piece of property just outside of town last fall, and due to a driveway issue, the deal fell apart. And it just so happened that I started talking about bringing the project to town, working with Jean and with Steve, and then, of course, with Amy, over the last few months, really. Amy had just come on board whenever that was. And essentially, my focus is to bring an event and a celebration venue to Piattone. What I mean by that is not solely weddings, but it would be an upscale venue that would allow multi-use, multipurpose. Primarily, the revenue would be driven out of weddings and large events between 150 and 250 persons. Most typically, a wedding, proms, wedding anniversary celebrations, class reunions, things of that nature. That'll be the primary purpose of the venue on the weekends, specifically, most typically Friday and Saturday. However, having lost some relatives recently, Steve and I kind of started talking about this from the perspective of how difficult it is to find a place for bereavement luncheons if your church does not have the counsel to be able to support that at the church. And so in the design elements of the Devonshire project, there is a room that is enclosed that will comfortably fit 50 seated persons for something like a baby shower, bridal showers, baby's first birthdays, bereavement luncheons and whatnot. Devonshire's proposed project includes both the full catering aspect as well as bar service, which would be packaged into the catering. It would not sell any type of standalone products for takeout or anything of that nature. But that is the primary scope of the business. It would be minority owned, where I would be the main shareholder of 60% or more. I definitely have planned the site and worked with the architects to develop a good neighbor site plan to both focus on being able to be supportive of the village's economic vision, the growth vision, as well as the residential area that borders along the Swanson Building and that 20-acre site located right next to I-57 at the south side of Wilmington Piattone Road, essentially next to the Shell and to the south. Okay?
Southeast.
Southeast corner. That is correct. So if we look at the overall footprint of the project, it's about 119 by 71, so it's roughly scoping out at about 8,500 square feet for the primary structure. The component to incorporate the manager's condo, which would be myself, would be in the corner of the upstairs of the venue at roughly 1,225 square feet. Well, not roughly, that is what it's designed to be. And then there would be a carriage stable that would allow, in the scope of the business plan, would allow for the bride for weddings to be delivered to the weddings or in, from a prom or perspective of the carriage ride, something similar to what they do downtown Chicago with the V-SAVI and the big fancy Cinderella-type carriage. That is the general scope of the project. If you click to the next slide, you'll see a site plan, although that's probably not the easiest to see. I did print some site plans that I will leave for you. You can see that the main entrance to Devonshire would come in off of the existing road at Teal Avenue, and then I've labeled on the bottom left, we're gonna work bottom left to right, so you've got the existing residential, and then you've got some trees. Then you would have, item C would be a parking lot. The road would come in and then veer off, creating a one-way circular design in and out with a drop-off at the front venue. There would be the carriage stable to the right or to the west of the venue. Behind the venue, there's a patio with a chapel-like open-air gazebo, and then we would build in a pond with a fountain in it that would be directly behind the gazebo. And then off to the east would be a two-hole putting green to keep the guys busy while they're waiting for the ceremony. If you click to, any questions while I'm going along, please just ask me so that you don't have to try to think of them as you go.
So this is a southeast corner, not the northeast, right?
Yeah, southeast. And that was, did I mark it wrong?
Well, it says northeast down here.
On the letter, it says northeast.
Right.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
So that's what I put on the agenda.
So we have puzzled looks.
Yeah.
Okay, it's the southeast.
Okay, perfect.
Would it come all the way out to Wilmington Road?
No. I would be using the south half.
South half of?
The 20 acres.
Okay. So the front would still be available?
Correct. Okay, so if you click to the next slide, again, this is just a little different view as if you were coming in on Teal. You'd have the sign to the left, and then it would branch off, and click to the next slide. This would be if you were looking southwest, so if you were looking from the residential homes, this is what the homes would see if they were looking through the existing evergreens. So you can see the carriage stable is placed on the site plan, slightly diagonally placed where the venue faces north-south. So the width goes east-west, the front of the building faced due north. That makes sense.
So the stable will be towards 57?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes. And that, again, is part of the good neighbor design of the site plan. And then if you click to the next slide, this just gives you the rear view of the structure. You'll notice that the structure has a lot of windows. The idea is when you walk in the grand foyer, which is cathedral, you will then be able to see through to the back, to the gazebo, to the patio, and out onto the pond. And then in this diagram, so you're looking from this view, you're looking to the north, slightly west. Okay? And click on to the next one.
Is the pond between the buildings and the interstate?
No. The pond would be straight south, so the pond would be close to Rubex property.
Towards Kennedy.
Yes, towards Kennedy. But still, there's, and we'll get to the site plan, but there's two rows, not one, but two rows of trees that would separate from the pond. Then there's the retention basin and some extra land, and then it goes into the agricultural area. Okay, so this is just a different view from the back, a little closer view. The seating for people to have their wedding ceremonies outdoor in the gazebo, the gazebo comfortably fits the bride and groom and a fashand, and then the patio is scaled to fit about 70 people on the actual patio, plus room on the sides if needed. So if you click the next one, this is a different view of the backside again. This would be looking from the stable area, which is closest to I-57, back towards the residential area, but from the rear view. You'll notice there's a little balcony on the left side. That's my apartment condo. So I'll be able to look out and to be able to see what's going on outside, but yet incognito. And the next one. So obviously, a big element of what makes this very unique is the horse element, as well as making it truly special to their day. The design of the business plan itself is focused around a huge amount of study and research that I've put into this. Prior to wanting to build it in the village of Piattone, I had purchased property outside of the village, closest to the, closer to the I-45 or Route 45 and...
Bar Road.
Bar Road, yeah. And so when I look at the competition, we obviously have the atrium here in town that has most frequently been for different types of events than what I'm looking to market to. And then we have CDME, which would be the closest competitor, offering a somewhat similar venue in a very high-end, very beautiful setting. That's my goal, is to really make it really pretty and very green. What they don't have is they don't have the flexibility that I would like to provide to market really to the X generation, the Y generation, and the millennial generation, because what they really want is that blank canvas that they can really glam it up or bring it down to more of a country symbol, and I want to be able to provide that. So my target demographics for marketing is Kankakee County, specifically Bradley Bourbon A, of course, Piattone and the surrounding affiliates going towards Wilmington and then north towards Frankfurt, Mokina, and New Lennox. The closest, the closest competition to what I am proposing we build in Piattone is located in Lamont, and it's called Montebello, and it's a similar concept with an estate home feeling venue with the, a lot of land and ground and whatnot. And then also Forked Creek, or, I'm sorry, North Fork is the only one that I know of in the Chicagoland area that has the horse element to it. I, in fact, received a call this week from the Village Christmas Committee asking me if I would provide the carriage rides in December for the Christmas walk and Christmas event here in town, and I said, well, I would be happy to if I get to do this, because our goal would be to be open for the holidays, specifically for December, to do some small corporate events, some small networking events, and then to have our first big kickoff at the New Year's Eve celebration, beginning weddings in 2020. So that's kind of the vision of the project. As you can see, although I do not have everything set up with the village, I've worked very hard on making sure the site plan is developed. I have full-scale blueprints that are ready to go out to bid, and really just looking to talk through the feasibility with the village and to answer any questions and clear up any rumors. So if you look to the next slide, this would be the view from the I-57 Ram, so it would be the west side of the proposed site, looking towards the venue or looking towards the residential area over on Oriole. And if you go to the next slide, what I have provided in a larger scale is the actual floor plan and design of the first floor, the second floor, and the elevations. Everything is to scale. I have hired an Illinois architect to provide all of the blueprints. Jean has helped me from the economic development side. He has helped me with a lot of conceptual design and thoughts, and then, of course, all of my research, I've put that into play. Just for those of you that don't know me, I do want to... Just, for those of you that don't know me, I do want to just step back. So I'm Bobby Kelly. Some of you may know my brother Randy Murray from Murray Overhead Doors. And I grew up here in Piattone. I went to school in Piattone. I'm Dale Jacobson's sister and Randy's sister. And then I have one sister that lives in McHenry. We all went through the Piattone School Districts. I currently live in Mantino. I would like to relocate to Piattone. I would like to say that I'm rooted in Piattone. If I had a choice in which community I build this at, because I am building it, is will it be Piattone or do I have to go somewhere else only by default? So I'm really wanting to try to move this project along. Where I'm at currently is I did propose purchase contract on the existing parcel. I did get permission from the parcel owner to be here today and to talk with all of you, and I did get it in writing, to talk about the feasibility study and what potential zoning challenges that may bring that we need to talk through. And he is, or they, are waiting to sign the purchase agreement based on some feedback from today. So if you look at the next slide, this is floor one, and like I said, I do have actual printed copies you can look at, and I will be leaving them with two copies for the village tonight. If you look at the next slide, it then shows the area that would be. The left side is the bridal suite, allowing the bride and her bridesmaids and mother to be able to get dressed, do their hair, have their makeup and nails done, a lounging area. It's all again, commercial use on the left side. The right side is the access in and out of the venue from upstairs to downstairs on the owner's side. The left side of the bride area is slightly, I want to say it's 795 square feet, where the owner condo area is about 1,225 square feet. It is completely separated to where, you know, I can't look down into the venue. You can get in and out in every area by dual ingress egress. And then if you go to the next slide, it just gives you the elevation, front elevation and rear elevation to scale on that as well. So, how can I answer what questions?
You said you could handle 150 to 250 people for a wedding?
Yes.
How, I don't know a lot about these places. How would you rate it in size to other venues that predominantly handle weddings?
That's a great question. So based on the research in the state of Illinois, throughout all counties, but specifically in Will County, 178 is the average size wedding in Will County. And the average wedding cost is about $26,700 in Will County. Now, 178 was a huge driving factor on why I made it at a capacity of 225, or 220, I want to say. And that is comfortably seated, that's not sardined in. Likewise, the structure allows for large open doors to open up to the patio where there would be the option, if it was nice weather, to be able to have, the guests would rent a tent, they would have to be professionally staked, they would have to obviously get a permit for it, and put up a tent that would then allow the extension of additional people for, let's say, the reception or something of that nature. So that's why I say the indoor seating, which is what we definitely have to plan for as the norm, would be 178. So, did that answer your question? I mean, it very much compares to what is necessary. There are places that, you can go to the Tuscany in Mokina at 191st and they can seat up to 400 or 500 people. But the trend in this business is definitely going towards not a banquet hall. People are looking for more of a blank canvas where they can make it their own. And in a smaller way, because the prices are so expensive, few people can afford $70,000 weddings at 500 guests.
How big is the horse barn?
It is 36 foot by 40 foot is the actual stable, and then there's a 60 by 60 equipment, non-animal related, attached to it.
So you have one horse out there?
No. I will have, will have the amount of four stalls at any given time. There's likely to be, no, I'll know more than four, one to four.
Yeah, would those all be used in the carriage business?
Yes and no. One of the full concepts of the plan is pet therapy, as you well know. Part of my background is to go, is I operate senior living communities. And one of the largest and most rewarding things for a lot of seniors as they age in nursing homes, assisted living and memory care, is pets. And so, part of the business plan is to have two miniature horses that are literally, you know, under 34 inches, that will be able to be taken to those types of places to provide pet therapy. They will also be incorporated into like birthday parties and...
Your drainage pond, I was out there probably eight years ago, nine years ago. And at one point, and I don't know if it would be on the property you're talking about or south of it, there was drainage that just, it was like a, not a pond, but like somebody ran a caterpillar through and made a low spot and some pipes that came in and just dumped it there. Is your property incorporating that?
It's, the use of that is to the north of that considerably. So if you imagine going in on teal, what I would like to build on is if you took teal straight across to I-57, I would like to build on the south half of the property that I would be purchasing. What you're talking about is in the southwest corner, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. And it's a mishmash and mess. And that is part of the property I'm looking to purchase. It almost looks like there's a retention basin there, the way it's hollowed out.
But not really professionally done, like making a low spot and then dumping these pipes in there and that's where the water came in?
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's ugly. I don't know how it ever got through, but... How will that affect you or will it affect you or will your business affect that or...
So one of the elements of the landscape plan that I have is to utilize anything we dig out. So like if we were digging out the pond for what will be a visual key part of the wedding ceremony thing, I would like to then use that dirt constructively to create some berms. And certainly, I don't need I-57 and a bunch of the photographs for weddings. So in my vision, it was to repurpose that land into that area and make that a real pretty area.
What's the current zoning there?
B3.
So you're, does that incorporate what you want to do?
With the exception of the special use for the animals. It's certainly, everything except for the animals fall into that.
So that's not part of the village right now?
We haven't really examined it fully. So, but we're not sure if it's a tax amendment for the animals or a special use.
A tax amendment right now, there is a prohibition for animals within the village. So that would have to be altered. That is not a difficult problem.
I think we'd probably have to write it so that we don't just open it up so that anyone would have to...
So it'd be special use for that one location?
Yeah.
Yeah, a tax amendment?
Right, we can work that out so that essentially it's limited to this project and very similar, anything that would be very similar to it, which, you know, is fairly limiting.
All right. You would probably see another one of these pop up.
Yeah, the only other thing I would say is, I mean, I have to look at B3, but as some of you probably know, we do not have a PUD provision in our ordinance. And this would certainly be something that could fit into a PUD concept. Normally, a PUD is allowed, potentially allowed in all zoning districts as a special use and a special development under the concept of a PUD. We might want to think about that if there's a problem with the B3, with all of the uses that you have here. The horse issue would have to be a tax amendment and we can handle that, if you, you know, if you wish to.
And the additional structures, you know, we would just have to kind of look at those real deep in the weeds kind of issues, but it's feasible.
So is this in the village right now?
It is.
Yes.
Well, is it really?
Yes, it's already there.
Okay.
Zone B3 currently. So, yeah.
So what do you want from the village?
Right now, today, what I would like is the feasibility and just to take the temperature of the village and to be able to answer questions, to see, you know, how you feel about the project, most importantly, so that I can work with the realtor to be able to secure the property. Obviously, the seller does not want to tie the land up in a contracting, contract pending due diligence and then find out that a month down the road or however long, the village says, "We aren't even gonna consider this." And so in fairness to the seller and to myself, you know, I just wanted to be able to introduce the project and then to be able to ask all of you, what do you need from me to be able to make this project a reality? And also to look at the feasibility of the timelines. I explained that. The concept in the business plan is heavily designed around occupancy at some point in December. The key elements there is that I need to be able to be booking 2020 weddings. I can't start booking until I have things going and weddings book out six months, 12 months, 18 months, 24 months. So as soon as I get a permit and a stick in the ground, conceptually, and I've spent a lot of time and money on a lot of artistic stuff, because I need to develop a walkthrough website with 3D imagery and stuff to where people can commit for a year from now.
So, what, I mean, are you, somewhere in here you mentioned something about $400,000, a $400,000 gap that you're looking for, something from the village or...
So at that, at this point, everything is absolutely conceptual. Because what I think happened, and I'm not sure, because I don't know exactly what you have in front of you, but there's been a recent change. I was, we were working on trying to secure the piece of property on the north side of this, on Wilmington-Piattone with the lake. However, that particular property is not annexed into the village. For everyone's benefit, I think annexing into the village helps a lot of things. And so my proposed Plan B was the south side, which is what I'm presenting tonight.
Would you own the property then at the end of your project to Wilmington Road?
Yes.
You will. Do you have any future plans for that?
So not currently. I have had people express the same question and ask, so, you know, if you don't need all that, what if? And I'm like, well, it all depends on who has what and how feasible it is for the village, you know? I mean, I don't, I don't want to be at Wilmington-Piattone front. So, and I'm imagining other people might, so it might be a good fit. It is almost 21 acres, it's like 20.6 acres, and I really need the 10 on the south.
So it'd be basically 10 in the front?
Yes. And it would be all based on teal.
Okay, and that's in between the shell and 57?
Yes. Yeah.
The drawings and pictures you're showing here, is that an artist rendition or is that exactly what it would look like?
No, that's, other than the fact that I have to pick out stone and colors of siding, that is me sitting down, picking stuff out, I mean, I've already...
So what we see is what we get?
With the exception of the, the stone might be darker gray or lighter. But yeah, I mean, that's all real. That's all to scale real. Obviously, I have to, the only thing that's fluff is the landscape, because he didn't know what I wanted planted, if it's evergreens or trees.
And that's something that we'd get into down the road as far as a landscape plan.
I mean, it was just to provide you the general feel of what I'm going for.
Because this is gonna have to go back to planning and zoning.
Right, of course.
We've been, we've been talking, Bobby and I and Gene and Amy have been talking for a while. Bobby and I actually started talking just kind of on the side way back, a few months ago, when we were sitting, talking about something else and when she was actually originally looking out around 45. So I said, you know, this is something that I would love to see, you know, in the village and we kind of started going in that direction.
Have you done any preliminary projections as far as the benefits to the village?
Absolutely.
Financially?
Yes. That's why we all agreed that annex, going with the annex versus non-annex was important. And obviously, you know, when we talk about the gap and the analysis that has to be done, I mean, I think that that all is based off of, am I able to purchase this piece of property or not? You know, there's still some, some specific variables and then I'll be able to drill into the bids. I have done a lot of preliminary bids on the asphalt and, you know, all that other stuff, but now I'm ready to go and get serious about getting my hard numbers. But right now, there's a little bit of a gap and if anything, I believe I've been conservative in my numbers.
Once again, back to the property that you own that aren't developing, is that big enough to put a hotel on for some sort of a venue that when people come to a wedding that...
That's what I would like!
Yes, sir.
That's what I would like.
Well, for my two cents worth, this is a kind of classy operation that I think upgrades us. You know what I mean? It looks impressive. If the numbers work and everything works, I think it's on the money.
So Amy, you had said, you know, with all the different variables with the B3, we know it fits the hotel event side of it, but you're thinking about the multiple structures because of the barn or because of the i-stock or the...
The multiple structures, the residential with a commercial combined and the tax amendment needed for the animals. So those would be the three things that I would be digging into with the zoning.
Do you know, does the village have a different code than Will County does when it comes to the condo in the commercial?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's what I was going off of.
Yeah, this wouldn't be, our building codes are different than, or zoning, zoning is different than Will County. But again, I mean, this is gonna have to go back to planning and zoning. I think Jim, the attorney, was talking about a possible PUD. Yeah, if we, we would have to create that. The other question I have, when you say the condo, would that be limited to the manager or owner?
Well, that's all.
I, yeah, I knew that upfront, but would you have, would you have going forward? Do you, I mean, if it's restricted to, you know, manager or owner, is that what you have in mind?
Yes.
Not just a saddled condo?
No, 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 restricted, yeah. Absolutely.
Got it. That's what I thought.
Yeah. Should I someday get to ever retire, I would love a manager to be able to live there and handle it, but...
Would your plan be to continue your work at Claretdale?
Actually, I will definitely have to until the project can support me, but my goal is to definitely go full-time. It is my own succession planning per se with my career. For those of you who don't know, I had gotten sidetracked. I currently manage about an 18, well, it is an $18 million a year annual senior living I currently manage about an 18, well, it is an $18 million a year annual senior living community and have, have been in sales and operations for about the last 25 years of very large budgets and expenditures. And I'm really confident that I, my resume will be able to handle this project, not to mention I got a lot of skin in the game.
But your ultimate plan is to be on site?
Yes, absolutely. And with my ultimate goal is if I can get a stick in the ground in June and occupancy in December, I am hoping that by the following June, I'll be full-time.
Is it feasible to put that project together within?
Only because I've invested a whole lot of capital into moving the project forward before I, I've been in Las Vegas gambling, let's say.
Do we envision any traffic issues? Because weddings kind of are a lot, real busy and then nothing.
Right. So coming in off of teal, I don't think it's going to restrict anything that would be in the immediate area. And it does have the circular design with an entrance and an exit coming on the private property rather than on the public road.
Where do the?
Because it's going to go by, the Swanson Building is going to go by Shell, that's really it. I mean, it's not really driving through the neighborhoods.
Right. It's right at the Swanson Building.
Yeah. Okay.
Where do the horses go?
So there's a white, three-rail vinyl fence that goes around the whole area. See that big square or rectangle?
I mean, I don't mean where are they housed, where do they, where are, where do the carriage and horses?
So I don't have in the site plan, the entrances and exits yet. And solely that was because I was getting cheap on the artistry. And I have to be able to see topology reports and see what the ground is and where things are going to be. But ideally, what will happen is in that little fenced area at the front of the barn with the big doors, notice that that was an extra safety and good neighbor feature I built in was that there is double fencing. So in the event that a horse got out of their stall unplanned, there's no way for them to get out of the big area. Does that make sense? So they would get in the vis-a-vis in the little semi-enclosed area, and then the, it'll go around the pond and then drop off at the gazebo, the carriage rides. So it'll be the outer perimeter in front of the putting green, but.
So you won't be like carriage rides like through town or from the church to the?
So I would love to be able to do that. I would love to be able to offer that service. Jim and Becky's carriage rides talking to the village are booked out a year in advance. And there's just nowhere that offers this. And so I would love to be able to provide that service. And that's where the business plan is really, I'm trying to meet the needs of the individual customer. If that's what they want and I can do it within the village. And by the way, the vis-a-vis has hydraulic brakes. It has a manual override, and it has all the appropriate turn signals and a slow-moving sign on it. So it is street legal.
How many employees were there, would there be?
So obviously, it bases based on ramp-up. I'll have a full-time maintenance manager, grounds and maintenance manager, and then I will work part-time until the business builds up, and then hopefully I'll go full-time. The bartenders, servers, and cooks will all be based on events. So a lot of part-time, but it'll start between 3:00 and 20:00, depending on the event, per event.
Bobby, could you talk about briefly the other businesses in town that might benefit?
Absolutely. So I did a soft economic study, and basically what I mean by that is, you know, I went to Johnson's and I talked to Johnson's, and I'll just use this because they were happy to share the information. But I asked them, I said, so, you know, I am proposing this project, and I'd like to know if you have any input to it. Obviously, every wedding or a large event typically includes flowers. Well, their eyes lit up to be about this big. And we started talking some serious numbers, and they were really gracious to get into a lot of detail. But just in that one business, it could generate close to $50,000 a year in revenue for them. And, you know, that's, that's a lot of money. So, and it's more so than just the money, it's the exposure out, and I use Johnson's for everything, always have. Likewise, I have relationships with like a studio on second with Julie, and she's very interested in partnering with me to provide photography sessions for senior pictures, for weddings, for the different events. So I have a, I've been coining it Proudly Piattone campaign. And so that Proudly Piattone campaign can far reach more than just your florist and your photographer, your two go-tos. It's about partnering and promoting the Proudly Piattone, like I'm imagining a sticker, but I would have a brochure that for every bride and every family I would talk to, I would work with different merchants in town. And if they are interested in participating, they can have the Proudly Piattone little sign and be in the brochure to advertise their own businesses and to promote economic growth across the whole community. And I think there's a lot of opportunity. I also want to be able to offer all the local business people the first opportunity to bid, like Strubauer, and I use Kukat's for my heating and air conditioning currently. But I just, I want to put money back into the village.
As I said, I think, personally, I think this is a great concept, you know, for the village, and this is definitely.
You bet.
And I would love to have a farmer's market too. Just one day a week. So that the area farmers and produce growers would have an avenue, but it being right at I-57 really allows for a lot of great exposure. And the country-type setting to this in the parking lot, not inside, would, I think, be a great thing for people to come off of 57 and stop. Anything else? Sorry.
Amy, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to give, I'm going to give to you, and you can decide who you want this to go to. But in here are all the images, the site plans and the drawings, the blueprints. And so whoever needs these. What's the next step for me?
That was what I was just going to bring up. I didn't know, Jean, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I have preliminary numbers and we'll go through those and try to generate some tax revenues for the municipality.
Okay.
See where we're going with that.
So next step would be P and Z?
P and Z, research for me.
Right.
And P and Z for me and Jim, we're going to have to dig into a little bit more about what she wants to do specifically on the details and.
I think she wants to get a feeling.
I, yeah, that's where I was just, I was going back, I was going back to that. So I mean, I think from what I'm hearing from the board, but I don't want to speak for anybody, I think the board feels like this is a good project to pursue at this point in time.
Absolutely.
And that we would like to go, go forward and take the steps necessary to try to move it forward. I think that's your answer.
Yay!
Okay. So what we'll do is, you know, we'll work with Eugene and Amy and myself, and we'll get that next step developed and.
When does P and Z meet next?
It would be March the?
March 27.
27.
Do we call a special P and Z meeting if we can get it done?
If we, if we need to, if we get to the point where, I don't, the chairman's here, I think.
That's fine.